Good evening and welcome to the City Council Meeting of the City of Lenore for Tuesday, August the 20th, 2024. We welcome you here this evening. Thank you for coming. As we normally do, we get started with a moment of silence and we'll remain standing for that moment with our Pledge of Allegiance. And before we do that, I would like to please mention the, we lost Mr. Charles Chuck Troutman this week. Chuck was quite a gentleman in our area. He's a volunteer, a businessman. He was with Blue Ridge Electric for over 39 years and just did so many great things in our community. He will be missed. Quite a, he was a Rotarian and very active in the Boy Scouts and involved in all those kinds of things. So he will be missed in our community. Did read in the obituary where he was born by his father, Dr. Baxter Troutman, brought him into the world. He was one of our early doctors. So I thought that was quite interesting that he brought his son into the world and he was one of our early obstetricians in our, in our community. So anyway, he will be missed. So please keep his family and your thoughts and prayers over the coming weeks as, as they prepare for his loss. So thank you. Now please rise for a moment of silence. Remain standing for our pledge. Thank you.
Please salute the flag. Our Pledge of Allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As we get started tonight, I would like to first can give congratulations and to Council Member Jonathan Beal. Jonathan will be a part of the North Carolina League of Municipalities' Policy Board this year, was selected by the, the Board of Directors of the League and the President. So Jonathan, thank you for being willing to serve on that. I know you'll be coming up with things that will be presented to the League Board and then on to the North Carolina Legislature. So we appreciate that you're willing to be a part of that and let's move forward.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. All right. As we get started, we do have matters scheduled tonight for public hearing. Tonight, our first one is a rezoning. This is for Ellison Place. This hearing will be held to consider a proposed conditional zoning district ordinance for property located on Ellison Place. That's east of US 321 slash Blowing Rock Boulevard. North Carolina PIN numbers 2850211695, 285021427, 285212266, and 2850212174. These would be rezoned from B6 Transitional Business to Conditional Zoning as requested by property owner Virginia M. Mullis for four vacant properties to accommodate 11 single-family lots located subject to the following four conditions and based on the consistency statement below. Proposed special conditions. Number one, except as expressly provided otherwise by this ordinance, the property shall be governed by the Land Development Regulations of the B6 Transitional Business Zoning District. Number two, are all uses permitted within the B6 zoning district or allowed in conditional zoning. Number three, special standards for single-family development. Item A is each lot will be a minimum of 6,000 square feet. B, houses shall be oriented, oriented to front along and accessed by Ellison Place. Item C is the landscape buffer. The mature tree line and natural buffing along the rear of the lots must be retained for single-family development. If the national, if the natural buffer is removed or damaged, a 15-foot wide planted buffer strip shall be established and maintained in accordance with Section 712 of Lenore Zoning Ordinance. Item D is a subdivision plat showing all-new utilities, road layout, easement, and setbacks. Referencing this ordinance must be approved and recorded prior to any permitting. Number four is access. This is, of that, item A is a private shared driveway extending beyond the end of the current city maintenance of Ellison Place shall be permitted for access to lots 1, 2, and 3 as indicated in the concept plan. A shared driveway agreement detailing the private maintenance responsibility shall be drafted and recorded with a register of Ds and noted on the final subdivision plat. The shared driveway must provide access and allow for all service vehicles, including utility, emergency, and sanitation vehicles. The shared driveway agreement must hold the city harmless for any driveway damage caused by city service vehicles. And item B of this is the maintenance of Ellison Place shall be adequate for the ingress and egress of emergency vehicles. The consistency statement is the proposed conditional zoning ordinance is consistent with the adopted competency plan because it enables this area to protect the distinctive residential character of Lenore's neighborhoods from the encroachment of inappropriate non-residential development, provided that no businesses have opened in this traditional business zoning district. It would be more pertinent to provide housing in an area otherwise not providing a service to the public. All right? That is the presentation to it. We'll now open the public hearing and I will first hear from our Planning Director, Hannah Williams, to bring us, excuse me, some information that we want, need to hear.
Good deal. Thank you so much, Mayor Gibbons. And I have some slides for you tonight because there are quite a few details to go over. So this is a conditional zoning ordinance number 11 and yeah, it's for Ellison Place. So here's the subject property. There are four existing lots on the western side of Ellison Place. The acreage totals 1.84 acres. There are two larger parcels to the north and two smaller parcels to the south. Currently it is Zone B6 Transitional Business and a conditional zoning ordinance is proposed mainly to reduce the minimum lot size for single-family homes to 6,000 square feet and to allow for some other driveway options. Ellison Place is a dead-end road off the eastern side of Blowing Rock Boulevard between Crestline Place and Seahorn. And the applicant, David Rulie, has the property under contracts and seeks to add 11 houses to these lots. These same lots were rezoned from R15 to B6 in 2005. The right-of-way of Ellison Place is 30 feet wide and the paving is 22 feet wide. The conditional zoning ordinance proposes B6 to remain the base zoning district, but there are three conditions that the ordinance proposes and three conditions to approve and consider tonight. First is the 6,000-square-foot lot size. Like I said, a 4,000-square-foot reduction from the required 10,000. The smallest one on the plat is 6,170 square feet and the largest is 6,784 square feet. The second condition to consider tonight is a shared driveway, private access for these northern three lots, these three right here. Currently, the paving ends about here where the driveway is for 118 Ellison Place, but the right-of-way extends all the way up to this northern parcel where Trinity Methodist Church is. And the developer wants to have the option to keep this private, as a private driveway. The driveway agreement would require to have proper turnaround for service, emergency vehicles, as well as to hold the city harmless for any damage caused on private property by those vehicles. The third condition is the landscape buffer along 321. Just, there's a mature tree line there today and this would just kind of keep the, the backyards oriented towards Blowing Rock Boulevard and to have a, a landscape buffer there and so that the homes will face and be accessed from Ellison Place. You wouldn't have the option to turn your house around so you could front on Blowing Rock Boulevard. So those are the basics. Council can amend, accept, reject, or add more conditions. Here, I'm going to show you the detailed site plan. That just goes over everything I just talked about. Shared driveway area up here. Proper turnaround would be required. Orientation of the house to face Ellison Place. And this is also showing that the existing house at 119 Ellison Place is excluded from the zoning ordinance. Ellison Place only accesses two houses currently. It is a city-maintained street, but it accesses 119 Ellison Place and 118 Ellison Place. I'm going to come back to this site plan when we have our discussion, just so that we can use this as reference, but for now, I'm going to keep going. So here I have a slide comparing what CZ11 brings and what B6 currently allows. B6 requires 10,000-square-foot lots for single-family homes. Seven lots are possible today. The applicant is proposing 11 lots. So that's a net of four lots, four additional lots. CZ11 does not recommend any changes to the setbacks that are currently allowed out there and no changes to the uses. This is where I would like to point out that today, town homes are allowed, apartments are allowed in B6. Town homes can be a max of eight units wide or eight units in a block, and they can be up to 12 feet wide or minimum of 12 feet wide. They can be wider than that. My estimate is that 16 to 20 town homes could fit up here today. Apartments, low-density apartments are allowed here at 7.2 dwelling units per acre. In the acreage provided, 1.84 acres, 13 units would be allowed. And this would be allowed today without a legislative decision. Also, a retail store would be allowed. So a Dollar General could locate here today without a legislative decision. A bank could locate here today. A restaurant could locate here today. Alrighty. So usually you hear about the Technical Review Committee, the city staff that look at, at development decisions. You hear about them during a major subdivision process. Since this had so many details and is headed towards major subdivision, we went ahead and held a TRC meeting, just so I could get other perspectives on, on this. TRC recommendations included a new water line in Ellison Place. There's no water in Ellison Place today in that right-of-way. The two houses on the property currently get water from two different areas, but for increasing the density here, a water line would be required. And then TRC also discussed the private road and driveway maintenance. And as long as these two attributes are insured, then, then the, the private road would be okay with TRC. And that was adequate turnaround space as well, as well as holding the city harmless in case of an accident on a private property. I've also heard from the neighborhood about this. I've heard from several neighbors and folks concerned about increasing traffic. So I went ahead and pulled the, some traffic data from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which is data that we have access to through our NPO. And here I have a table of trip rates generated by various residential categories, various residential uses. And this, single-family detached housing has a trip rate of 9.43 during peak hours on a weekday. So that's peak hour. That's not all hours of all day, but I wanted to point that out. Also comparing it to peak traffic, peak trips generated, sorry, peak hour trips generated for other commercial uses that are currently allowed today. And a walk-in bank, we can't quite see that number, I'm sorry, but it's, the top one is for 31.74 trips in a peak hour per 1,000 square feet. So a 3,000-square-foot bank could generate up to 90 trips in an hour on a, on a, on a weekday, a peak hour on a weekday. A variety store, like a, a general retail store, they could generate close to 150 trips per 1,000 square feet on a weekday. And when transportation engineers measure trips, they're talking about coming and going. So you know, if you arrive at a store and leave a store, that's two trips. And this is relatively recent data from 2021. And we can go back and go ahead and compare that back to the residential rates. Residential rates are much, much lower. Here I have some property photos for you. The vacant lots are, you know, pretty wooded, pretty grown up. And so most of it kind of looks like this. We can see where there's one residence, 119 Ellison Place up here and up here. You can see the same driveway. This is the driveway to 118 Ellison Place. Here, there's a car parked and that's basically where the paving ends, like right where that driveway is. Here's where Ellison connects with US 321. This is probably what we're all familiar seeing, but I just wanted to make sure you all saw the, the connection. Ellison Place kind of goes up, makes a, a curve to the, to the north. This isn't the last time you'll hear about this. If the project continues to go forward, there is a, it's headed for major subdivision, which means the TRC would review it again and Planning Board would review it again once, you know, more, more design is in place for any kind of public improvements. And, and then it would come to City Council for a, a decision as well. And then, once the lots are created, there would be a zoning permit for each house to be constructed. So this isn't the first time that we'll hear about it or, or get to offer comments or approve it. And I also have the consistency statement here that Mayor Gibbons read earlier, so I won't read it again. But that about concludes my comments, but I did want to provide a couple of points of clarification. Page 18 of your packets, that's page eight of our staff report. It did say something about nine new parcels, but that's incorrect. It's clearly 11 and I apologize for that. And also, page 13 of the packets tonight mentioned garages. That has not been designed yet, but there is off-street driveway space provided. So I just wanted to clarify those things for you all. I'm available for questions. The applicant is also here tonight, Mr. David Rulie, as well as Project Planner on Staff, Matt Duchan.
Have the plans for the homes been established? Do you know the square footage of these homes?
No, they haven't been established. That's something that might be revealed during major subdivision, but it's also not something that we regulate design of. The state preempts design of single-family homes.
Hannah, what are your options?
No, go ahead. Go ahead.
What are your options on a turnaround at the end of this?
Yeah. So if you're going straight by the City of Lenore subdivision ordinance, it would be required to be a, either a cul-de-sac, which can kind of take up a lot of land. We also allow for L's or T-shaped or Y-shaped turnarounds. But in conditional zoning, you can condition it to, we can, we can allow for it to be privately maintained. So, and, and that is something that would be kind of assessed during the major subdivision, that TRC would kind of review it and say like, yes, this would be adequate for a service vehicle turnaround.
So it's not just the developer's decision. It has to be?
Yes. Mm-hmm. Yes.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
On the, the, the maps and the charts, it shows-
Yeah, let me bring that back.
Where it shows a shared driveway-
Yes.
That essentially is extending the street-
Yes.
So that those three properties could have access to an eventual driveway.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Call it a shared driveway.
Yeah, it would basically be like a private road to the end of the current, it would be like having a private road within the public right-of-way, but the city's maintenance would end. And it would be, there would be a maintenance agreement in place that those three owners would be responsible for maintaining it. And that maintenance agreement would also have to come during the major subdivision process. We, that would, at least the language would have to be in place.
Okay. And currently, the street is platted for the right-of-way is 30, 30 feet?
Is 30 feet wide.
And we only have 22 feet we're currently using.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah. And just a point of clarification, some of the private property could be used to create the turnaround. It wouldn't all have to be within the city's right-of-way. And that's, that's just what, that is what the developer proposed in the conditional zoning.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And this does come as a recommendation from the Planning Board?
Yes, it does.
Presented to?
Yes. Planning Board voted to, or voted to recommend approval of this by a vote of five to one.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Question. What, what size, what size is single-family homes?
It, that, that's not part of the conditional zoning. It's not going to be conditioned to have a certain size of home and it hasn't really been proposed yet.
I mean, in subdivision proposal?
I don't know if we would make a condition for the size of the home. That's not usually something, the state preempts local zoning from regulating the design of single-family homes and we, we don't usually have a size requirement for that. And so I know that some size has been talked about with me, but it's not anything that's been made official. Yeah. But we, you, we can discuss it with the developer if you want to ask him directly.
He's here. We need it. We can, we can address, have him address that if we, if he will consider it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I feel bad.
All right. Let's, we're in the public hearing, so at, it's now, I'll turn it over to the people who are here. If you'd like to speak to us tonight, please come to the podium and give us your name, address, and then we will.
There may be a couple typos. Can I pass these?
Why don't we, before you do that, let's see if, Mr. Rulie, will you address the, let the applicant speak and then if that's okay, we'll come back to you.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, you can hand these out. Yes, sir.
I threw these together, finished right before I came over here. So there may be typos and stuff. Not all of them. I'm just, I'm going to break up, but I want y'all to have it.
Thank you. Thank you. If you'll give us your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. It's David. My last name's Rulie, like unruly. And my address is 517 East Boulevard in Charlotte. But I actually, I live in Blowing Rock, but that's my business address is out of Charlotte.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to make any statements or?
Yeah, I, well, I think I'd like to start just by saying two things. And the first one is just thank you for your consideration. You know, I appreciate it. And then the second thing is I, you know, I don't want to appear like a, you know, out-of-town developer, you know, coming in to pounce on Lenore. And did want to give you just a little bit of context in that I've worked on three projects in Lenore and one, all in downtown on Main Street, 118 Main Street. I bought and renovated that building and have leased it up. There's a card shop in the bottom and hair salon that fronts Mulberry Street. And then 309 Main Street, which is up just across from First Baptist. It was the Anything Office Building. Now it's Zuma Office. And there's a law firm there and some allergy shots and made significant renovations of that building and kind of got it up and going. And then also worked on the former SunTrust Building and ended up selling that to Exela. But I love Lenore. It's a great place. And everyone, everyone that I've interacted here from, the planning staff, to tenants, to property managers, to everyone, they've all been so kind. And so I've wanted to do more business in Lenore. And so that's what sort of led me to this project. And, and then in particular, what I see as sort of a hole in the market is what I would call attainable housing. Housing that it's, it's, maybe, I don't even know what affordable really means anymore because everything's so expensive. But with this site, it's a unique site because it already has a road. So you're able to create lots in, in an area where people want housing and you don't have to build a new road, which significantly allows you to, to put the price of the house at a place that is more attainable to more people. And so I know you asked a question earlier about the size of the homes or the design, and I haven't done that. Typically, in my process, I would go through the land planning to see what we had and then say, okay, now, now let's design the best kind of housing that works here. But there'll be housing, you know, somewhere between probably 1,400 square feet to 1,700 square feet, you know, four-bedroom homes would be around there, two-story would be, it'll probably flesh out somewhere around there in terms of what the housing product is. And, and then I try to price those homes, you know, in somewhere in the high 200s. And trying to think about anything else. So that's sort of my aim and intent, a little bit about me. Do you have any questions or?
Yeah. Any questions for Mr. Rulie?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, thank you.
Yeah. Okay.
My name's Thad Mullis. I am the resident in the middle of all these properties, 119 Ellison Place. I do have a lot of concerns, both on a personal, emotional basis and also on a very serious, as far as the way it's planned to be put together. And so I threw this together. I put down all, all my thoughts. I didn't have time to go back through it and edit it or remove stuff. So I'm going to just skip, read over parts of this. I'd like you to have a little bit of understanding of the history of Ellison Place. I also want to talk about why concerns I have about the proposal, both major and minor concerns and recommendations. And then I believe the, the Greens family are going to talk about some of the stuff in the agenda, in the proposal that was given to y'all and, and go over that. Really quick on Ellison Place, I just want to give you some feedback so you know what's going on. Ellison was a short gravel drive that only went up to the top of that Ellison where the Seahorn House was. That's part of Steve Strange's property now. Later, my grandfather bought all the property from there, all the way to past Trinity Church. And he extended that driveway on Ellison, a dirt road, all the way up to the beginning of Jim Green's property today. My grandfather wanted to develop these property into a residential neighborhood, R15, and it was going to have a stair step. So it was going to turn off the highway, go up Ellison, turn left, go down to the end, past Jim Green's house today, and turn right and connect to Seahorn and Fairlane. That was the plan. He was going to have houses all around. That didn't necessarily work out that way. The neighbors across the street from my house, they all bought those lots behind their house to protect themselves. Jim Green bought the house at the end of the road. When he did that, we expanded the dirt road all the way up to his driveway, a little bit past. And a little bit later, the Greens and the Mullises and the Sehorns all pooled their money together. We are the ones that expanded that road. We are the ones that paved that road and we are the ones that put in the existing storm drainage and et cetera all the way up to where the highway portion is. A little bit later, a couple of years or so later, I believe it was donated or given to the city to be a city street. It was a private drive all the way up to that point. And that was so the city would help maintain it. And the city has done a little bit, like they'll send a sweeper up every now and then, clean it off. And every now and then, that ditch across the street from my house, they'll go in and, and dig a little bit of it up. But they really haven't done anything to maintain this road in 45 years. Most everything we did, I came home, I'm the one that cleared out those ditches across the street. They'd have trees growing up in them. I cleared out the storage drains, the storm drains at the end of the street, right near where the Seahorn House is or Steve Strange's property. After having some illnesses and et cetera, I realized I don't need to be doing that anymore. So I contacted the city and they've been doing a little bit better job. But anyway, so bottom line, moving on down, we, that's about, that's how the street got squared away. Jim purchased his home. We did later where the Trinity Methodist Church is, that used to be the old Keyhole House. Some of you may remember that. It had a keyhole on the top. And Lenore, I don't know who, I was young, but I think it was Lenore or somebody, they wanted to, they wanted to restore either Fort Defiance or the Keyhole House. So they elected to do Fort Defiance and one of my grandfather to either restore the Keyhole House himself out of his money or to donate the land to him. And he said no. He later sold it to Trinity Methodist Church and then they actually have a little keyhole in the front to show it. He, when my grandfather passed, any continued development came to a halt. He, when my grandfather passed, any continued development came to a halt. There were still a lot between Jim's house and the Methodist Church. That was where we were going to connect the road from Ellison to Seahorn Street. Trinity Church later bought that, okay? They, they wanted to have a little extra land and protect themselves a well. A lot of people say, I read in that proposal that this is Lenore surplus land, and I sort of disagree with that. It's not surplus land, it's land that never sold because of inflated pricing and some of the zoning restrictions. Residential, I've had people come up since I've been here in the last seven years, I moved back, looking for residential property, but the problems were they were priced too high. I know even me, twenty-five years ago, I offered to buy all those lots at twenty-five thousand dollars a lot, which was double the tax value, and I don't have time to go on further, but, and I even offered, if it got rezoned commercial and I was forced to sell it, that I would, as commercial, that I even donate, give seventy-five percent of the proceeds back to the original owner, just to be fair, so it wouldn't seem like I was trying to take advantage in buying something residential. Not that I wanted to do, sell that, but you know, if I was forced to. And that land sat for twenty-some years. Trying to sell it as residential, and they wanted too much. You could buy other property cheaper. Then it got, so then Steve Strange wanted a variance on his piece of property, that's on, if you turn on Ellison, that's on the right, to put a showroom model home. We had public and private hearings, we agreed to it, to the variance, and then he never did anything with it. Then Virginia, on the left-hand side of Ellison, also requested variances for a couple of different businesses. It included, it was like an office retail-type business, or a small restaurant, et cetera. That was discussed, a variance was given, and nothing happened. Two or three years later, a B-six, they came up with this B-six transitional. I think it could use some improvement, but it was a lot better than not having that B-six transitional. And my key is word is transitional. It fits from, so you can have homes or small businesses. My thoughts of small businesses would have been things like a, an accountant's office, or a realtor's office, things like that up and down the street. But when they rezoned at B-six, the price of the lands got jacked up. Those lots, those four lots here showing you, couple of them were listed around fifty thousand, I don't remember the exact amount. The two bigger ones on the other side of my house, across from Jim Green, were listed at seventy-five and a hundred and twenty thousand. Nobody was going to pay that much money to build a residence home there. And because of the restrictions on B-six, no one was going to pay that kind of money to put a business, because it had to be set back from the highway, and you had to access it not from Ellison, but from the frontage. So there was all these other buildings and offices that were vacant and, and available and vacant land. No one was going to pay that kind of money for the land. And that is why it sat for another twenty-plus years with nothing done. So it wasn't surplus, it was overpricing and types of restrictions. As it is now, those lots are being sold for about half what they were originally listed at. And so I just wanted to give you the heads up on that. Moving on, proposed, proposed zoning concerns. Personally, I enjoy the privacy on Ellison Place, okay? But I have never been opposed to anyone building lower-to-middle-income homes. In fact, I always thought having three or five homes might be nice, you have some nice neighbors, et cetera. And I'm talking low-to-middle-income homes, I'm not talking anything fancy. But I thought that would be nice. Only this year did I learn, in spring, that there was a proposal to build several single-family homes on my side of the street. And at first, I was thinking, oh, four or five homes. But then I found out, no, I went and checked the B-six zone, and it would allow them to put ten, seven homes on ten thousand square-foot lots. My home is R-15, that means fifteen thousand square-foot more lot. It's sixteen to seventeen thousand square feet. So they were going to set it up, they could actually put ten thousand lots and build nice houses there as well. What I'd call affordable housing, or the other, I can't remember what David called it, he said, obtainable houses. And that would have allowed for three houses, when you turn on to Ellison, three houses there, and then four houses across from Jim Green. Now, I feel like that's a little extreme, but it's doable, okay? But then I found out only a month ago that, no, they want to rezon this for eleven lots on six thousand square foot, I mean, eleven homes on six thousand square-foot lots. That's like me taking Jim Green's house and dividing it into three sections, and that's how, that's how small these houses are going to be, and so close together. Or the same thing with my property, you know, give or take about a thousand square feet. So I just think it's way too much and too congested. But here's where I have the biggest problem, and that is the fact that Ellison is a dead-end street. It does not have a second ingress or egress. It's a dead-end street. If we put eleven houses there with two cars per parking space, and count mine and Jim's, you're looking at a minimum of twenty-six cars. And then if the people in these house want to have kids or have another car, there's no place to park them. And all twenty-six cars, if you line them up end to end, from the entrance of Ellison all the way back to past Jim Green's, you barely get those twenty-six cars to back up. So imagine you having them trying, not all at the same time, but imagine that many people trying to get in and out of one ingress and egress on the busiest section of Highway 321 in the state. And it also has the highest statistical accidents in the state between Smith Crossroads, as you remember that, all the way up to where Walmart Street is. And I looked up some of the statistics, and I've talked to several people. I went to the NCDOT, and I called some people I knew there, and I called some other land planning people I knew from when I, when I lived in Cary and different things. So I've tried to get feedback, to be fair. They all sort of thought seven houses were a little much, but doable. None of them could believe they wanted to put seven on a dead-end street, button up to the highway. And my concern is, I sit, my, my kitchen window looks straight across from the entrance to Dunham Sports, and I'm not exaggerating, I hear horns beeping, brakes squealing every single day. And I looked up that traffic, and I actually thought they should put a light there. Now, to be honest, I want to see a light there, look it out by, but I think it's the right thing to do. And that was before I heard about all this. And now, so I pulled up some statistics. We have two, we have two stoplights, one on Hospital Avenue and one joining Seahorn. There's a total, in the past two years, there's been a total of twenty-five accidents at the corner of Hospital and 321, and that has a light. And at the other side, where Seahorn connects to 321, there's another fourteen accidents. It's a total of forty accidents in just the past two and a half years. And that's not counting all the accidents that happen between there, where people are pulling in and out. There are seven entrances and exits that would not, would not meet state code today. And that's a fact. And, but I don't know how it got passed then, maybe the codes were different, I don't know, but they are not the code today. And it is very dangerous pulling out of drive. I've driven for fifty years, and I have a clean driving record, and I'm not worried about things, and I have a big truck, which gives you a little bit more of a, a security when you're pulling out. I even get nervous if I try to make a left turn out of that road. I know Jim, while he was driving, he would always have to make a right turn and drive all the way down to Walmart, go all the round Seahorn, back to Hospital, back to 321. I have my wife, I've told her the same thing, if there's traffic, you turn right and go around, don't try to pull out to the left. I had to tell her to do as I say, not as I do, but, because I do do that a little bit more, but I am nervous about doing that, because you literally have to watch seven different directions. You'll have cars pulling, I'll pull into the middle lane every time, and then I'll look to move over into the, into the other lane. And you have cars pulling into that middle lane from, from the Dos Amigos that want to turn at, at Dunham Sports. And you have people pulling in and out of Dollar Tree, right across from Crestline, which is only two houses, two lots away from Ellison Place, and there's another entrance directly across Ellison where the Krispy Kreme used to be. It is a nightmare. So I can't imagine, with just us, it's bad, but if you're going to put a thirteen, have thirteen total houses of twenty-six cars, that's going to be a problem. And then when people want to try to come to visit, there's no parking for anybody to park on top of that. So I made a couple suggestions, put a, I'd prefer, I'd prefer just leave it B-six, and I don't mind if you put a retail office or accountant's office or something like that, that's cool. But if you're going to rezon this to, to put eleven houses, then we need to have a second ingress and egress. I can't stress how concerning that really is. And also, and all the accidents I said between Hospital and Seahorn, a hundred and ninety-eight in the last two and a half years. Now, many of those would have been in the parking lot itself, many of them were pulling out of the parking lots or off these other streets, like coming out of Dollar Tree and et cetera. A hundred and ninety-eight, plus the forty at the two stoplights. So I really think if y'all are going to improve this, they really need to do a traffic study, they really need to put a second entrance and exit, maybe, maybe an easement going to Seahorn Street, and I don't know if you could put something else going out the other end to 321 or not, I don't know, but they need something. And if they're not going to do that, they need to put a light, not at Dunham Sports, at Ellison. And synchronize the lights. That's not going to hinder traffic if they are synchronized, just like Hospital and Seahorn, the middle one is synchronized to turn on and off with them, you're not going to be slowing traffic down anymore, you're probably going to be saving lives, or at least serious accidents. And the last thing on there, this is a separate issue, but I see all the accidents, all of you know all the accidents on 321. Why no one proposes to change that speed limit only from three, from Smith Crossroads to Walmart, make that thirty-five. People will have to drive a little slower, it'll be easier to pull in and out of all these egresses and, I can never say it, entrances and exits, okay? So those are my major concerns. Recommendations, I sort of touched on most of those two. I guess the last thing I wanted to say on here is, I do not care about who the neighbors are. I don't care if they're red, yellow, black, or white, Democrat, Republican, rich or poor, I don't care. As long as we have neighbors that are honest and respectable. But I do have a problem with extensive, high-density housing, wall-to-wall houses with, with, with no really room for people to come in and go or park, and that entrance and exit is my biggest concern of everything. And I don't think, unless you've been there and watched it, I don't think anybody realizes how bad that intersection is. And so, anyway, I just request that you leave it B-six, let the developer continue to build, but put three houses on one side, four on the other, and then we'll figure out the rest, you know? And I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, we're still in the public hearing.
Hello.
How are you?
I'm Debbie Hawn, H-A-W-N, 415 Woodridge Drive. Thank you Mayor Gibbons, City Manager Mr. Hildebrand, and members of the City Council for allowing me to speak. I know you have a difficult item in front of you tonight. I'm Debbie Hawn, one of James Green's two daughters. First, let me say that our family is not against homes or businesses being built on Ellison Place. I'm going to repeat that. We are not against businesses or homes being built on Ellison Place. Our main concern is the number of homes on four existing lots that's being proposed to you tonight. The proposal also includes two parking places, two parking spaces per driveway per home. If these are being targeted as median family homes, teenage children with cars and/or any visitors will have to park on the street. Have you all been up the street? Ellison Place is a narrow road with a ditch on one side. Mr. Mullis and/or his visitors have parked their vehicles on the street in front of his house and not in his grass in front of his house, and it's difficult to get by to go up to Dad's home. We've called the police department several times and asked them, please, just come and see if emergency vehicles would be able to get by the vehicles that are in the street without going in the ditch. There've been four lots for sale for a long time, but they weren't advertised for years. A rusted Ira Triplet Real Estate sign is posted in the woods and was there until recently, I haven't been back. But I mean, that's how far back we go that this was advertised. Ms. Mullis tried for a long time to get the four lots zoned for business and was finally successful. Some of you remember, you may have voted for the business zoning a few years ago. Advertising for selling the lots has been posted off and on since then. I came up to City Hall last Tuesday and was brought up to Matt Dukin's office to voice my concerns about eleven homes proposed on four existing lots. Hannah heard us talking and joined our conversation. When I was voicing my concerns about smaller homes with smaller lots being proposed, she asked if I knew what type of homes were being built, because they had not met with the developer to discuss what the homes would be like. Still didn't know tonight. So they approved smaller homes to be built on four existing lots without discussing the types of homes, the sizes, and are now bringing it to you for your approval? Dad's home is brick on all four sides, forty-four hundred square feet on one floor, and the Mullis home is brick on all four sides, thirty-seven hundred square feet. Are the eleven homes proposed brick on all four sides? With eleven homes on four existing lots, the resale value of the two homes there now would plummet. Who would want one of the large homes with eleven small homes on each side or in front? On page seven, paragraph two of the zoning request proposal, I quote, "The proposed conditional zoning ordinance is consistent with the adoptive comprehensive plan because it enables this area to protect the distinctive residential character." Again, are they going to be brick like the character and the consistency of the neighborhood on each side, in front, and the back of the homes on Seahorn Street that will be to their front? With the proposal of two-car driveways, what's the setback of these proposed eleven homes? We know a median-sized lot in our state is twenty thousand thirty-eight square feet. We also know from the written proposal that the B-six zoning requires ten thousand square feet for single-family residences. Again, page four, first paragraph under the zoning analysis. I implore you, before you vote for eleven homes to be built on four existing lots, please table this proposal and do your homework as our city leaders. Please drive up Ellison Place and look at the land. See where four homes will be built as you make the left turn before the Mullis home, and seven homes will be built after his home across from my father. Also, please look where the last three homes will have to share a driveway and will be required to sign an agreement to share one driveway. Again, page four, first full paragraph on the page. Please think of this proposal beside or in front of the home you've lived in for over fifty years. Please keep the lot zone B-six to protect the residential character and to preserve Lenore's future prime business property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm Karen Green Cannon, I'm Jim's other, he only has two daughters, so I'm the other one. I also live in the city of Lenore, and I have all my life, my husband and I, we both grew up here, we love Lenore, he was a teacher.
Give her your address, just so we know.
Oh, I'm sorry, 512 Goffview Court, in the Woodridge.
Thank you.
We live close together. And he was a teacher, head football coach, owned two businesses in Cola County, I'm a pharmacist. We have raised both of our kids, they went to Highbryton. Our daughter and son-in-law both have medical practices in Lenore, and our son now is a doctor at Grace, but wants to And our son now is a doctor at Grace but wants to come back to Lenore. So we love this town. We grew up on Ellison. It's where my dad has lived since nineteen seventy-one. He was a pharmacist, owned his own here. He was also a city councilman. We're not opposed to residents or houses on Ellison or the missing middle homes, is what it's been called. But putting eleven houses, if you have gone up that street, is way too many. I'm just worried about the safety issue of this proposal. It's, like Thad said, it's very dangerous pulling out on Blowing Rock Boulevard and at least twenty-two, at least twenty-two more cars on that street, on that narrow street. Is the city gonna propose a stoplight? I mean, you know, or is that state? That was just a question we had. The second safety issue is, is concerned, is there the plan for the turnaround? Is a school bus gonna be able to get there? If you have these homes, it's gonna be for younger people. So is the school bus gonna be able to turn around? Are they gonna go up and turn back around their daddy's? It says it's gonna be privately maintained. What if, if something happens to the road and it's a single mom and there it says ten thousand dollars? What are they gonna do? Who maintains this? It says in the proposal, private maintenance agreement. Is it paved? Nothing has ever been said. Is it paved? Is it dirt? Where will they turn it around and back up? I know it's a T or an L or sound, but you have to worry about school buses getting up there. The road's twenty-two feet. And who's going to, you know, for safety issue, is the developer gonna widen the street? Also, it says in the report, curb, gutter, and sidewalk or pavement, to install sidewalks or pavements in lieu of. So if there are that many homes, a safety concern is that narrow street, smaller homes, smaller kids, people starting out, they're gonna be walking up and down this road with no sidewalk, pavement, or gutter. And this is a major concern. So we need to, if it passes, they need to make sure that someone is putting in sidewalk and guttering. The water runoff has been a major concern. I have some pictures, can I bring them up there? Is that okay? I have pictures of where the water has run off on Dad's land from, and the city's aware of it. It's just cannot be fixed. It's applied, and it's a sinkhole in the parent's yard.
It's on his property.
It's on his property, across the street from the seven homes. So you deal this home, these homes here, you're gonna have more of this sinkhole. I mean, right now, it just has its damage. So is, is that gonna be addressed? Is the sinkhole, you know, from the water running off of it, is the developer gonna add the guttering and all the other to keep it from going this, because the extension of the road will cause more storm runoff? Another safety concern that everybody has said is the parking. With lots cut down from ten thousand to six thousand square feet, any extra visitors will have to park on the street. Guys, that road is just not big enough for anybody to park. There will not be a school bus, it will be in the ditch, we won't be able to get our Amazon packages, and we are not gonna be able to have fire and rescue. My dad's ninety-five. He, you know, he lives on that street. And thank God we've never had to use one, 'cause Dad's very healthy, but he's ninety-five. So it is a narrow road. How will EMS, you know, get up there? If the last, the last road is up there and there's a turnaround, we still don't know if they would be able to even turn around. The last safety issue I have that has not been brought up is there's only one street light on that street. Who's, are somebody gonna put more streetlights? You put eleven homes on that street, it is pitch-black dark at night. And I will tell you that because the streetlights down there, will the city add more lights or the developer? But in closing, we are not opposed to housing, we would like for it to stay business, but we just need some answers. It's all up in the air. We are being, we feel like we're being encroached on, but there's, nobody's giving us answers. We don't know anything. So I ask all of you to come up that street and look, know what you're voting on, see the street, see Dad's house, which is forty-four hundred square feet, Dad's is thirty-seven hundred. They're fifty years old, but they're still their homes. And come up there and see it, and see where they're gonna put, seven houses here and four here, you know? And, and just take a look at what you're voting on, if you don't mind. And if not, then just keep it B six. We have, you know, no problem with that. But thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I clarify something she said?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Once she stated the road was twenty-two feet wide, that's only at the entrance. The road going all the way up past where all the houses are, that's only fourteen feet. Huge difference. And the other thing, she mentioned about the storm runoff, that's where it runs off into? My yard, my house, we've had to put up. We had to put a, a speed bump in front of my driveway, we had to put a drain in front of our garage that was converted to a family room, and we still have. It all comes down from the church, from Jim Greens, comes into the road, and funnels down our yard into our house. So what's gonna happen when they put all these extra houses here?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm Steve Blanchard. I live at eight-one-one Seahorn. I'll just be brief. I wanna thank my neighbors for giving a very thorough presentation. My only observation is just the density of the houses. I don't think it fits. If you look at all the houses in Seahorn and going east and everything, they're like quarter acre, half acre, and then you're trying to squeeze all these houses, it just doesn't make sense. And, thanks.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Joe Barrett. I live at seven-twenty-nine Seahorn. And I would just like to echo the same concern, that it not be reduced to the small lot size from, what, ten thousand to six thousand? That's my only concern. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you very much. Hannah, do you wanna address any of the things that they were asking that you can?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, I'd like to say, for one thing, the side step back will be ten feet, so there will be at least ten, twenty feet between the homes, so it won't be just wall-to-wall houses. Other one?
One-way, one-way street.
Excuse me?
I was addressing the one-way.
Oh. Um, it is currently a two-way street. I, I'm not clear about how narrow it gets at the top. In my records, I do have it at twenty-two feet wide of the paving, and that the right-of-way is thirty feet wide. And we have proposed the shared driveway and, within the city's right-of-way and onto private property. And the major subdivision process would confirm what the turnaround would look like, and it would be reviewed by our fire department and police department, and that could confirm the, the turnaround size and make sure that it was adequate for service and emergency vehicles. I also meant to point out earlier, the planning board, they had considered this topic and they, they thought about tabling it, waiting for more information, but instead they voted to add the condition that was item B on, on, under the access part of, it's, it's on the front page of the agenda. Item B was to ensure that the turnaround was adequate, or not the turnaround, but the entire street, the publicly maintained part of the street and the proposed private part of the street and the turnaround was adequate for emergency vehicles. So whatever the developer brings to, to us during the major subdivision process would need to meet those standards, and it would be reviewed by emergency personnel. Sidewalks are requirement for any subdivision of three lots or greater, so a sidewalk would either be required or a fee in lieu is, is a potential here as well. But again, a technical review committee would, would review that at that stage. We would, we would determine which one was adequate. Yes?
The shared driveway.
Yes.
Private maintenance, that, and that includes the turnaround?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Private, to who?
It would be the, the
Three property owners.
The three property owners at the top.
And it serves the whole street.
The, the turnaround, I guess, would serve the whole street if, if they needed that turnaround up there. Mm-hmm.
So where would the turnaround that we are requiring them to then? Not, we're saying they gotta have it, but if it's a, a maintenance issue with them, who's, they have to maintain them, but how, we gotta govern that to maintain?
How do we ensure they maintain?
Sure. Generally, there's private maintenance deeds that get recorded with the register of deeds, and, and also if it's a zoning requirement, planning staff can hold them responsible for that as well. But
What's wrong with extending the street?
That is certainly an option. You can reject this condition and, and make it, and require it to be entirely publicly maintained if needed.
And, and I've, I've got several things I wonder about the cost of, of this to the city, the cost of the water lines
Mm-hmm.
that have to be put in there. Is that developer borne or is that city borne?
Generally, it would be the developer's cost to bear, and then if, reviewed for city standard, and, and then the city would take on the maintenance.
Other utilities as well?
Yes.
Okay. How about street widening?
Um, that's something I'm a little bit fuzzier on. It, it could, it could be widened if that was, it was a requirement. Yeah.
Or not necessarily widening, whatever would need to be done.
Repaving.
Obviously, we need to.
Improving that.
What you have to look at simply, what I, one of the things I consider from an economic standpoint is, what is the tax value, tax, tax base of eleven homes of this value rendering taxes that help us recoup some of the costs that we as a city are gonna have to bear in order to, to extend this?
Certainly.
Three million dollars, I guess. Three million dollars to sit, or two, times eleven, so about three million.
Okay, so three million dollars taxes. Fifteen a year?
Obviously, we have to address, if it's twenty-two feet and they're saying even there is down, we gotta address that. That's gotta be
There's no homes there today, that's why it's that
Right, I understand.
Sure.
It's only two homes in there.
Mm-hmm.
So, but still, it's gonna have to be looked at and addressed.
And I guess the other, the drain, the runoff, the drainage issue that certainly rerouting and changing the direction of those when we adding those homes.
Yeah. So the stormwater exemption standard is, or when it crosses into low density, which means you need to have some kind of permit through, you know, our, our stormwater contractors, Western Piedmont Council of Governments, is twenty thousand square feet. And this, the added impervious of this development is under twenty thousand square feet. I think it was between fifteen and eighteen thousand when, when the developer and I were speaking about it. And it would still be in the stormwater exemption.
Exemption.
Yeah, the, the, the home sites, the added, built-upon-surface would still be under. Mm-hmm. But, yeah, that's what I'll say about that.
Would the baby plant curb and guttering for that?
Like, likely with a, with a sidewalk, yes. And that, that's a major subdivision topic, something that would come from, yeah, reviewing a plat, because this is, this is zoning today, so I don't have every single detail, and I'm sorry about that.
Yeah. It's a per space.
Absolutely.
You should, and we'd be coming back for other things.
Design will come, but
And that's, that's what makes this difficult, is all the design, all the information is going to come, and, and I, I wanna make sure we as a council and the developer and, and the residents have, have, everyone has a full understanding of what this could be. And I don't have that tonight.
Nope.
Nope.
Yeah. That's the hard part of it.
It is. It is.
And I guess we need to remind, and you brought this up earlier, it is set, though, that you could build apartments and townhomes and everything there without coming here. That's, that's gonna be done.
Yeah, it would go, a townhome project would go straight to major subdivisions, so all of these elements would be designed for you to review tonight, or, or in a public hearing.
But what's before us is not that. What's before us is, is, is a proposed development that's in a transitional zone, and to me, transition implies that you're moving from one pattern of growth towards another.
Mm-hmm.
And, and so transition implies change, and to meet growth and trends in, in the, in the prevailing area that we're, we're talking about. And as I, as I look at this right now, I don't know how this planned development is consistent with, with the growth that, that we have been hoping would come, which is commercial in nature. And, and so I do worry about the density of this, as, as has been brought up. One of our key focuses, every year when we do our budgeting process and we establish council priorities, is housing.
Housing.
So we're trying to balance the need for good fair market housing with, with, with this, and I, I, again, I'm, I'm not trying to speak for everyone. I'm, I'd like a little more information or have, get a little more clarity, maybe a little more information. I don't wanna kick the can down the road too far. I know the developers, to the developer, time is money, but I wanna, I wanna make the right decisions, and I wanna have the best information I can, and I just don't think I have enough tonight.
I agree.
Could we ask, Mr.?
Would you like to speak with the phone?
Yeah, would you, you have a speak?
Yeah, come back up. Yes, sir.
The, you know, I, I understand it's, change is always, can always be difficult of any kind, and so I understand the neighbors, their concerns, and, you know, I, the, I used to live in a neighborhood in, in Charlotte called Dilworth. I don't know if any of you have ever been there, but six thousand square feet is what all the lots are in Dilworth. And it's one of the most beautiful neighborhoods in North Carolina. And there's plenty of room, and there's plenty of parking, and it works great. And the houses aren't attached. And the reason I went to Hannah and asked her if we could do a single, a denser single-family was because even though by right you could put some commercial use here, or you could put a multifamily use here, I felt like for the neighborhoods that were behind it, it's not gonna serve them well to have, you know, a CVS right there beside them. And then also, from a housing standpoint, there's a lot of foot traffic and people that are on drugs that walk up and down three twenty-one, and I feel like multifamily doesn't age very well. It tends to, it tends to not hold its value, especially if it's not high-end, you know? You're not selling million-dollar townhomes. And so it tends to, tends to do worse. And so my experience has been, is that single-family homes, even if they're smaller, they tend to have, to be more stable, because they have, not just a single person living there, they have multiple, they have families living there generally. And so they tend to age better, and I thought everyone would be excited, there was a, in my mind, not-dense housing development there. And so I, I would hope that that would be a real transition between, you know, high commercial on three twenty-one to, you know, not-dense residential, which is what the neighbors have, you know, but they're a lot size, and then the people on the, the street behind that I'm, is it Seward or what was it?
Seahorn.
Seahorn, Seahorn, forgive me. Seahorn. So I feel like this is a good, I, I thought this would be a good sort of compromise. And when I was sitting here, it almost reminded me of something of, of a similar meeting that happened in Blowing Rock a couple years ago, and it was, there was a developer who had a parcel that was right behind the spectacle trial, and by right, and he wanted to build townhomes. He wanted to build twelve townhomes. And the neighbors were like, these townhomes are gonna be too high. We don't want this to look like the top of Sugar Mountain. And it was, he wanted a three-foot, he wanted three feet more to get the townhomes. And so they shot it down. But by right, he could build a hotel, and he built the Embers Hotel, which is a ice store in the whole downtown, and everyone hates it. And I feel like we're sort of in the same situation here, where it's like, you could give a little bit on maybe some of your density expectations and get something that is really good for everybody, or it's like, you could, you could everybody, or it's like, you could get something you really don't want. So that's sort of my feeling on it, and the last thing I'll say is, and forgive me, but I love stories, this is a very short story, but there's a story about a rabbi, and as he gets older, he gets worried about having enough money, and so he starts praying every day, "God, let me win the lottery." Keeps praying, he doesn't win the lottery. Keeps praying, doesn't win the lottery, and after a year, he cries out, and he says, "God, give me a break," and he hears a voice that says, "Give me a break and buy a ticket." And I sort of feel like that with affordable housing, attainable housing, what we're talking about here. It's like, you gotta buy a ticket, you know, you can't, it's not gonna all come perfectly together if that's what you want. So, thank you for your consideration, I appreciate it.
David, before you go, do you hear the concerns of the residents that are there now, and the main thing that they've said is, you know, 11 homes you're putting in there on their street, and they're showing...
Well, it'll be my street, too.
I agree, 100 percent, but also, you know, it's too narrow, but can you address those feelings and what your foresight is on what you expect?
Yes, I would think, you know, we, and I don't have the figures, and this is something probably Hannah could look up for us, but, you know, most single-family homes that are approximately 1,500 square feet are not gonna have seven cars at them, and there's probably some sort of ordinance that would prevent them from coming there. So, you know, what we've accounted for is driveway space to cover two cars comfortably, and so I don't think there would be, like, all these cars on the street. You know, I don't anticipate people that can afford these homes to be throwing ragers on the weekends, but that's not something you can't control, but at the same time, it's like, I think you can plan for, okay, well, there's this many bedrooms, we have two parking spaces, which is plenty for this size home, and I think, I don't think it would overwhelm the street there. In terms of the stormwater, you know, from building standards and code, like, the stormwater is gonna get better, because each site is now gonna be having to handle their own stormwater. It's not like, you know, someone can just build a big block and then just dump the water on the neighbor. It's like you have to handle the water on your site through code enforcement. They're gonna make you do all that as part of the building process, so I don't have any concerns about that. I do, I would say, too, maybe some more explanations about the turnaround was, you know, trying to come up with a solution to not having to pay for extending the road and building a cul-de-sac, because when those kind of infrastructure improvements will make the houses exponentially go up, and so I've seen that before with a private road that comes around, and then it's, you know, it's maintained with the POA that would be established between, I would envision all the owners there. So whatever their dues are, it's just really a function of math, but, you know, say their dues are $500 a year, then those are gonna go into escrow, and then when there are maintenance needs available, those can be addressed on that turnaround. So that was the turnaround, stormwater, parking.
And there was a narrowing of that road, I guess, somewhere.
Yes, I, you know, I can't speak to that. I've driven up and down the road before, and I've passed another car, like, it is two lanes, so I don't know. The trees, though, are really grown over, like, it could use a good trimming, so I imagine that makes it feel more narrow, but I haven't gone out there and measured the road. I've just looked at it, like, on GIS on the plan, where it's just 30 feet right away.
So you envision these properties having an HOA?
Yeah.
To encompass and to take care of all these needs?
Yeah.
Now, with the HOA, are you envisioning them reviewing the construction of the homes?
He'll be doing the construction.
I would...
Or is that later?
With the HOA, typically, you know, my experience has been with residential, single-family development, is that the developer will basically control that until the last home is sold, and then it goes over to the homeowners, just because a lot of times, they don't know what they're looking at, and so, like, I'll have an architect, you know, that would design the houses, and then I would approve those houses, and then we would sell them, and then once the last one was sold, it would go over to the homeowners.
It's good, it's not a great plan, and I, everybody, I think we're on the right ideas, but we need to get those pieces that we can feel like everybody feels satisfied with. Size, what happens at the end, to make sure everybody's safe, the turnaround, to be able to get our vehicles in there, you know, garbage trucks, I guess, now pull in and back up, is my thing, don't they?
I mean, that is one point, is that why make me have to pay for, or punish me for what's already happening? Like, they're already servicing the street.
And I understand that, I'm not saying that, but we just need some of those answers that, from your side as a developer, and then we will have to, you know, figure out the other part of what we in the city will have to do to make all this be able to happen and work, you know, so. I will, so, anyway, any other questions of Mr. Roolay? Okay, thank you.
Thank you all very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is anyone else that would like to address the council tonight, if the public hearing is open? Okay, if not, I will close the public hearing, and I will turn it over to council for any action, discussion, motion, whatever we were looking for. We do have it on the, for rezoning?
Well, you know, I think everyone understands where my feelings are at this point. I will make a motion that we table this. I don't have a time period in mind. I would have to lean towards Hannah. I think we, as a council, have some questions. I'd like to route those through the manager back to Hannah to get some of these things addressed, so Hannah can talk with the developer to answer our questions and get some additional feedback on it. So I don't know what an appropriate amount of time to build into my motion to table would be, but I would lean on Scott or Hannah to give me some guidance on that.
But we would also be sensitive to the developer.
Absolutely, again, I said earlier, time's money, so, you know, until the next, till the first meeting, well...
First meeting in September would be...
First meeting, the third.
Third, September.
I mean, I think we can come up with our questions and have them answered by then.
Then, and get questions answered. Hannah, please.
If you don't mind, can you tell me what questions you need to have answered?
Well, I think, I think I'd like to submit those, I mean, I've got...
At a later time, okay.
I've got several, instead of running through them right now.
We probably all have some, too.
Well, and again, I don't know if anybody, I've been over there to look at the property, and I know others have, I would encourage everyone to do that.
Okay.
So I will make a motion that we table this until the first meeting of September, and we will route questions that we have through the manager, so he can relay them to planning.
Okay.
Okay.
Heard a motion from Councilmember Purdue. Any other questions, concerns? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. That's unanimous, and we're missing one council member, so that's six of them. Thank you, thank you very much, Hannah, and thank you all for being here. All right, we'll move on. We do have another one to go to here. We have a special, this is item B on that, a special use permit under our, of course, this is public hearings. This is for 117 Maple Drive Northwest. This is a quasi-judicial hearing, be held to consider the requested special use permit as submitted by Josh Clark, for the Outcast Community Church, to permit a church in the R-12 Single Family Zoning District on property located at 117 Maple Drive Northwest, North Carolina PIN number 2749450612, based on the findings on page six of the submitted staff report, and subject to the following three conditions. One, the applicant must maintain and improve upon landscaping where necessary on the site. A zoning permit will be required. Item two is, any new lighting for the church use shall be fully cut off and shielded as to eliminate and minimize light spillover onto adjacent residential properties. Item three is, the applicant must obtain zoning and sign permits from the Lenore Planning Department within two years of the issuance of the SUP. I will open the public hearing, and I will ask our planning director, Hannah Williams, to return to the podium.
Thank you, all righty.
You have to be sworn.
That's right, you do have to be sworn. This is a quasi-judicial. Yeah, and anyone who will be speaking on this tonight will have to be sworn in, since it is a quasi-judicial hearing.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth, so nothing can hide it?
Before that, I'm gonna let Mr. War just give us any guidelines of the quasi-judicial.
Basically, that anyone, this is essentially, quasi-judicial means it's like a trial, that witnesses need to be sworn, and anyone who's on the council who has any sort of possible conflict, or has made any sort of contact with anyone who might be involved in this, you're not supposed to have gone out to the property to look at it. You're sitting essentially as judges, and if you were appearing in front of a judge, you wouldn't want the judge to have spoken to the other side, or gone out and seen what the argument was gonna be about, or anything like that, so just keep that in mind.
Thank you very much, we appreciate that. All right, thank you, Hannah.
Absolutely, yes. The applicant tonight is requesting a special use permit for a church to locate in the former West Lenore Elementary School. They would be using the auditorium and a couple of classrooms, and they're proposing no physical changes to the building. I'm gonna flip to my conditions here. Right, the applicant doesn't intend to make any structural or physical changes to the building, and using existing driveways, existing parking. It is a small church. The off-street parking is more than adequate to service this church. They only meet on Sunday mornings at this time. Let's see, all landscaping is currently managed by the existing owners, Hasso Holdings, and they'll comply with any landscape standards. The first condition that Mayor Gibbons read out was just if any landscaping is damaged and needs repair, that would be required, and if they change any landscaping, a zoning permit would be required to replace it with our standards. They're not proposing any lighting at this time, but any lighting that is added would have to be fully cut off, so it doesn't spill onto residential properties, and, but really, only physical changes that they intend to make are signage, which would be required, which would require a signed permit, and really, this is a far less intense use than an elementary school, and so we just don't think that it would disturb the community any more than when the school was in session there. So that's really all I have to say to you. I know the applicant, Josh Clark, is here in the audience tonight, and if you had any questions, you can direct those to him.
Okay.
Would you like to submit your report as part of your sworn testimony?
Yes, I would like to submit the staff report as part of my sworn testimony, and I would also like to say that the planning board recommended approval of this special use permit.
Thank you very much. Any questions of Hannah before she sits down? Okay, thank you. Okay, we are in the public hearing. If there's anyone who would like to address the council concerning this special use permit for 117 Maple Drive, please come forward and be, give us your name, address, and be sworn in for your testimony. Okay, I don't see anybody coming up. Oh, okay.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth, so?
Hi there.
Hey.
Yeah, my only concern, I was wondering, they're just wanting to use part of the school, so are they buying the school? I live across the street from the school, and I'm wondering, are they buying the school? It sounds like they're just gonna use a auditorium, so what happens to the rest of it?
Is there any change of title?
Yeah.
From current ownership?
I'll come up there and respond.
Yes, please do.
This is a lease situation where the church would be leasing it. Hasso Holdings is the current owner. Jay Harrell is the representative of that, yeah.
So the property's still owned by the school system?
No, it has been, it's private property now.
Yeah.
Yep, it's Hasso Holdings is the owner.
So they maintain the ownership, so this is more of a short-term lease?
Yes, mm-hmm, yeah, so the only plan, the only planned improvements, or changes on the property is that the church would be using it. There's no other planned use of the rest of it right now.
Okay.
But it is zoned residential, R-12. Very few non-residential uses are allowed, so you'll likely hear about it in the future, but that's not part of the special use permit tonight.
Okay. Shirley, did you get, you got her name and address, did you, Shirley?
Karen's Full Pride.
Okay.
Harper Street.
Thank you, thank you. Is anyone else that would like to address the council concerning this special use permit? Okay, if not, then I will close the public hearing, and I'll turn it over to council for any discussion and/or action concerning this.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we approve the special use permit as presented.
A motion from...
By adopting the proposed findings on page six of the report?
What he said.
Yes.
Yes.
We have a motion from Councilmember Beal and the City Attorney, Roll.
I'm not making a motion. You don't wanna hear my motions.
We have a motion from Councilmember Beal that we approve the special use permit with the added language that was put in there and presented. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Thank you very much. That concludes our matter scheduled for public hearing tonight. We'll move on to our consent agenda items, consisting of minutes, city council meeting Tuesday, August 6th. Item B is a resolution. This is for Sealed Air Corporation Pump House Station Hudson. Recommendation is to adopt a resolution authorizing the sale of the fire pump premises located at 2001 International Boulevard in Hudson, North Carolina, as described in deed book volume 724, page 296, at the Caldwell County Register of Dees to Sealed Air Corporation. The offer is for $1,000 and was subject to the upset bid process. The city did not receive any upset bids. Item C is engineering services contract. This is for the Harper Avenue Sewer Line Replacement. Recommendation to approve, enter into an engineering services contract with McGill Associates for the Harper Avenue Sewer Line Replacement Project as submitted. Item D is a bid award. This is for the Mulberry Recreation Center Gymnasium Floor. All right, project as submitted. This is a recommendation awarding the construction contract for this gymnasium floor replacement project to the Sports Flooring Group for a contract price of $139,432.35. Please note that this contract price is inclusive of an alternate bid item, number one, upgrading to grade-two maple. The Sports Flooring Group is appropriately licensed and specializes in this type of work, included a detailed scope of work in the submitted proposal, and is the lowest responding responsible bidder in consideration of the selected alternate bid items. And item E is a resolution of support. North Carolina Division of Parks and Recreation, Great Trails State Grant Program. Recommendation, council adopt a resolution of support for grant funding applications in North Carolina Division of Parks and Recreation, Great Trails State Grant Program, with the amount of $497,994 as submitted. City of Lenore pledges a local match of $248,997, or one-third of the project cost, should the city be awarded funding. Those are your items A through E. I'll turn it over to council for any discussion and/or motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve items A through E as presented.
Have a motion from Councilmember Thomas, that we approve the consent agenda items A through E as presented. Any other discussion?
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
On the bid award for the gym floor, all of the drainage issues has been corrected now for the water flow?
It's underway, but yes.
But that'll be done before we, okay, just making sure.
Yeah, we're not gonna put that floor back down till it's done, you messenger.
Just making sure.
I ordered the contractor to barge your ash for...
But that'll be done before we, okay, just making sure.
Yeah, we're not going to put that floor back down till it's done. You question your hand.
Just making sure.
We ordered the contractor to barge your ash for roofing and gutter repairs maybe 60 days ago.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Okay, if not, call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. This will be great. Phil wanted to have us back. We've been without that gym for a while now. That's good. Okay, that concludes our consent agenda items. We'll move on to any requests and petitions of any citizens. If there's anyone else that would like to address us tonight that hadn't already done so, this is the time to do that here at the council meeting. All right, seeing no one, we'll move on. We do not have reports of boards and commissions. We'll move on to the report and recommendations of the city manager, Mr. Hildebrand.
Good evening. Few items for information. The planning board will meet on Monday, August 26th, 5:30 in these chambers. The committee of the whole will meet on Tuesday, August 27th, 8:30, that'd be the third floor city hall. The Foothills Regional Airport Authority will meet on Wednesday, August 28th, noon at the airport. The Carolina Tattoo and Arts Gathering will be held on Friday, August 30th through Sunday, September 1st in downtown Lenore at the Harper Room, which is located at 1016 Harper Avenue. And I will mention, if you want a city sealed or half-price, get those tattooed wherever you want those. That's up to you.
I can tell you that's not happening, for sure.
Last information, the city offices will be closed on Monday, September 2nd in observance of Labor Day. Tonight, we only have one item for council action and that's a minimum housing ordinance for 542 Wheeler Street. Staff recommends that you adopt the minimum housing ordinance directing staff to abate the property located at 542 Wheeler Street. That's NC PIN 2749571542 and parcel ID is 06-17-3-57 to demolish the structure. You have pictures in your agenda and all the letters we've worked on for several years to get this property abated.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation from the city manager to council and from the staff that we have a minimum housing ordinance for 542 Wheeler Street and this would be by demolishing the structure. I'll open up the discussion or motion from the council.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion we approve the abatement of the property as presented.
Thank you, sir. I have a motion from council member Beal that we abate the, demolish the structure for the minimum housing ordinance as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. That carries. All right, we'll move on to any reports and recommendations. City attorney, Mr. Roy, or anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. From the mayor's office, I always say that I would like to just mention our baseball crowd that played this year, the Lenore Legends, had a really good season. They ended up 22 and 14 for the year, so they had a winning year. They did not make the playoffs unfortunately. They lost a couple of one-run games that kept them out, but they, I think they had a real successful season. Most of their wins came at Walker Stadium, by the way, so that was really good. We had a lot of great crowds up there and they were saying they appreciated the support of people coming out. They do plan to come back and be back next year. They will be asking again for housing for the players, so if you know anyone or would consider housing one of the players, they would really love to have that, so please keep that in mind. Just wanted to give you a final update on their year and that, so.
I failed to go back and think, the Park Recreation Department for the Robbie Festival, another successful event, this is the longest-running event, I think 50 years.
That's right.
So, just thanks, Phil and your team.
Well done. And then we had the appreciate, employee appreciation added to Quasim Fitness Center the other day, which turned out to be a really nice event. Appreciate our Service Beyond Measure group for planning that and doing a great job there. It was good food and everyone, I think, really enjoyed that. So, thank you all for all you do with that. Anything from any of our council members that need to be reported?
I've got a risk management trustee board meeting tomorrow night and Thursday in Raleigh and then we'll have all of our year-end information. I'll share that with the council when I return.
Get us some good rates, by the way, while you're down there. We appreciate that. Thank you for your service on that, for sure. That's great, so. All right, anything else to come before us tonight? We've been here long enough, huh? All right, nothing else, we stand adjourned.